The time is now 6:47 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. Tonight, we have Councilmember Yarborough, Mayor Pro Tem Mize, Councilmember Cornelsson, and Councilmember Hodges present. Councilmember Rodriguez is absent. A quorum is present. Tonight, Danny Armstrong will do my invocation for me, so if you can stand for that and then remain standing for the pledge, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's about our heads. Lord, thank you for another day. Lord, just, I pray that the council members make good, clear decisions tonight and make them in the best interest of the city. And, Lord, just thank you for their time and thank you for putting these people in the place and the position they are. Lord, we know it's in your will to do that and it's in your plan. And God, I just want to pray that the City of Godly continues to prosper and grow. And, Lord, thank you for where we're at today. Thank you for where we've been. I know it's a little bit rocky, but thank you for that and where we're headed. And in the future that lies ahead, it's exciting because it's in your hands, Lord. And, yeah, we just thank you for all the blessings and thank you for the citizens of Godly, for who they are, for the ones that are here tonight and the ones that are watching. And, Lord, they're concerned about their town and I just, I pray that you give them some ease and some comfort, that it's in good hands and, Lord, it's headed in the right direction. And, Lord, just thank you for all you do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. No one signed up for public input tonight. We do not have any mayor or council reports or presentations on to consent agenda. Item A, discuss and take possible action on approval of the Godly City Council minutes from the regular meeting held on March 18th, 2025.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second. Well, I'll second.
unanimous second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough, a second by Councilmember Cornelsson to approve the consent agenda. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to the public hearing. We'll hold a public hearing on ordinance 04-2025-136, amending the fee schedule by amending rates for solid waste, providing clarification for the application of water and sewer tap fees, and providing fees for fire code plan review and inspection services. Open the public hearing at 6:50 PM.
Do you want me to start, give you some background on this?
Sure.
So, this is what we brought to you at the last meeting to discuss on a non-action item, explaining we were wanting clarification on the water and the waste or the sewer tap fees. And in your report, it shows that clarification. Also, we were given a CPI increase from our current solid waste services, and that would be 55 cents increase. So, we'll bring the garbage from 1962 to 2017. And then, on the fire inspections, as we were getting ready to gather this information up, BV had provided for us, they had actually gone in and lowered some of their fire inspection fees and charges, and then they reformatted the way it looked. So, those changes are in the back. There's no increase to those at all. But, and then, and then, I can't talk, they did change the format of the way their schedule is and the way it was set up as we adopted it last time. So, I just wanted to point those two things out to you. They said that they had got feedback that some of their inspection fees for fire services was a little higher than others, and they checked it, looked at it, and then got together and decreased those fees. And that's all there really is in here, in this fee schedule change.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak publicly during the public hearing? The public hearing will be closed at 6:52 PM. Move on to item B, discuss and take possible action on adopting ordinance number 04-2025-136, amending the fee schedule by amending rates for solid waste, providing clarification for application of water and sewer tap fees, and providing fees for fire code plan review and inspection services.
Under the, it says proposed water rate, but you did mention water rates being raised, but it says proposed, that's why, that's why, that's one question.
Where?
Page one at the bottom there says proposed water rates.
It should say approved at the very top of the page.
Right, okay.
It's approved, and we have to add the ordinance if you approve it again. That probably just needs to be removed.
With the roads and the condition we're in, Danny, you have a boring fee. This has nothing really to do with the fee when you go underneath the roads, but do we need to look at putting what we bore underneath the road, adding steel casing in there into them?
Danny?
To help keep messing up?
We are not, the only fees we are discussing tonight is the increase of the trash fee Okay. and the corrections of some of the wording and the decrease from BV on the fire code inspections. This is not a full review of all the fee schedule. That's the only things that's being changed or addressed tonight.
Okay. Never mind.
Motion to approve item B as written.
Second.
Have a mo-
No, sorry, I meant, I missed it, never mind.
Have a motion by-
I heard yes.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough, a second by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Mize, to approve item B as written. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to new business. Discuss and take possible action to adopt resolution R-04-2025-30, removing previous signatories and authorizing and designating certain city officers as signatories of the City of Godly for banking and depository services.
This has to do with a certificate of a deposit that the city has with Wells Fargo Bank. And if I got all the history right on this, this CD was opened up at Cow Pasture Bank. And then, when Wells Fargo purchased Cow Pasture Bank, that CD went along with it. And so, there's not been any customer-initiated account-related activity. And the resolution where you approved the city secretary, the city administrator, and the mayor as signers on the account was only for Austin County State. So, we have to have a separate one just for Wells Fargo. And I spent a lot of time trying to get them to let me do that, and so, without this resolution, they won't. They won't let anybody do anything. So, once this is approved, if you decide to approve it, we'll all three have to go down and sign a signature card so that we can do something with this CD. It matures in July of 2025. But right now, it's not getting any kind of interest rate, so I would, you know-
Has it ever?
At least we can do, no, it hasn't, because no one, nothing was ever done with it, so.
Motion to approve item A, for goodness sake.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Hodges to approve item A as written. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to discussion item. Item A, discuss a special event process to be added to the City of Godly Code of Ordinances. Ma'am?
So, Mayor and Council, I bring this to you tonight because I have been approached by many, on many occasions, by different organizations about having events in the park itself, not your pavilion, but the park itself as a whole. Some have been churches that want to have jubilees and singing and stuff like that. I know the Lions Club does an annual sale of flowers or something in the springtime. Those kind of things, along with our parades that we kind of worked with last year, will take care of all this. And everything in here, it's very detailed, and I have no problem telling you that I went to another city and just stole that right from them and then sent it to our city attorneys and have them look it over. So, it has been looked over by the city attorneys. But it does talk about the application process, the approval process, exemptions to a special event process, notification of a decision, denial, revocation of the permit, the inspections, the insurance requirements, and so on and so on. Everything is covered in this. And the reason I bring this to you is because with those events from other organizations, our insurance, our liability insurance wants to be notified if there's a special event because their insurance should take over. And so, this is a brand-new process for the City of Godly. With the pavilion, we don't have to worry about that. We have a rental process that we do with them, and that's in here, too. We went ahead and put that in with this because you've got your pavilion and you've got the whole park. So, that way, there's two different processes for renting the pavilion and the park as a whole. Because, to me, the biggest thing is if you're going to have an event, you don't want to charge anybody to come onto city property, and that addresses that in here. But it does allow for organizations, let's say if the Girl Scouts want to have a cookie sale. They're a nonprofit, they can go in, we don't charge them anything. We just ask them to do the application process only because we have something on record that if anything's destroyed or anything happens, we've got a record of it. Those are the, it talks about processions for a funeral, those are not part of this. This is part of the exemptions. Armed Forces of the United States Military, anything that they're going to do within the scope of their duties. City-sponsored events are exempt. So, that's one reason that we have our events with the Chamber, because the Chamber was having the Spring Fest, and we didn't want to have two events, so we just combined them and made it a city-sponsored event. But if you look through this, it even sets the hours for operation of the city park, and I could never find that we had any hours of operation. So, I don't know if you have any questions about any of it. One of the things I want to add to this that I didn't see was for a parade where it asked for the time, location, and street closings, that would also require that they do the text dot approval themselves. So, and this, this application has to be sent in 30 days prior to consideration of it. But I think it's a good thing to have for rules and regulations on that kind of thing and let some of those organizations use the park if they want to. But we also have it set up to where the city's taken care of, and we have something in writing that they're, that they do have proof of insurance and that they're following any rules and regulations if it's like, if they want to have a carnival, you know, and they want to have carnival rides, there's requirements in here about the inspections of those so that somebody just doesn't throw whatever out there. So, it's city property and we want to take care of it, and this is one way to do that.
And text dot, oh, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead. Text dot approvals come back to you, obviously?
In this, I have it going to the permit technician?
Sure.
She'll make sure, check out all everything off, see it's all there, and then it'll come, and it'll come to me. And if there's any kind of problem with it, I'd bring it to the council and just say, you know, you know, my recommendation to deny if they need to be denied.
I would stick it to the office, in general.
Yeah, so, I just think, I just think this gives us a process that we need to follow because we, it, I've found that regardless if we have it or not, sometimes they have events out there and we don't know about it. And if somebody slips and falls and breaks an ankle, they call me the next day and want to know who our insurance company is, because we are liable. But this kind of takes us out from underneath that during any kind of event like that. Because when we have special events, if there are power lines, we have to push, you know, we're required to tape them down or to mark them or something. That's part of all of our requirements when we have special events, so.
What was this? When you said school, I mean, Girl Scouts kind of messed me up, because I was thinking somebody taking over the whole park. But Girl Scouts, if they were there, they're going to take over one of the can of covered areas or whatever?
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, I don't know about here, but in cities I've worked in, like right at the end of their cookie sale season, they do a big blast, what they call a cookie blast. I don't know if they even do them anymore, but they used to use the entire park.
Okay.
Everything. They would set up, you know, games to play just to try to get people to come in and buy that last big batch of orders. I was just using them as an example.
I just want to make sure it's for the whole park and not just-
No, it would be for the entire park.
Yeah, somebody would use pavilion or-
However-
Covered areas.
You can't sell anything for profit in the park. So, you can't make a profit in, on city property. They can if they'll make an application for it because they're a nonprofit organization. So, it still does require them to do at least an application to tell me they're doing it, so I've got it as a record, because it addresses the fact of not making profit on the park. Parks not used to be used, parks not to be used for profit. So, because that money belongs to the citizens that built that park. And so, that's how we process this the right way.
On the hours of operation, I see people out there at 5:30 walking in the morning. And then, in the summertime at 9 o'clock, it's still hot, and I see those people may want to walk later on. Basically, is that the correct time or can we extend, extend the hours or something? Or is that hours just for these large gatherings?
No, this is park, operations of the park itself. We could put a summertime time in here, but 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Monday through Thursday is pretty reasonable to me. That's a workday, school week, maybe we can add summertime hours, but I wouldn't put anything, I mean, to me, you're inviting kids to come down because there's no curfew laws anymore, to come down and do whatever they want to do at the park. But if you put in park hours, you're curfewing them, anyone from coming in and destroying the park. And I know that you've had to repair restrooms.
Oh, yeah, that's a-
Many, many times, so. I just, 10 o'clock, I'm old-fashioned. When the lights came on, the streetlights, it was time to go home, so.
Wendy, this is probably-
Not telling my age.
Imagine this is a dumb question, but do our hours of operation reduce our liability at all, having them posted? I didn't think so.
You mean changing them or actually-
No, let's say we've got 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, right? And then, and like she's saying, a kid comes in, breaks his ankle at 10:30 PM, and then wants his parents want to come and sue the city, you know? Does that, does that hours of operation give us an argument to say this isn't our fault?
No. It's just city-owned property, regardless of when an injury happens.
It's just admitting that he criminally trespassed.
Yeah, well, this just helps the police also who are patrolling that area, that if anyone's out in the park, maybe unaccompanied people, that, you know, they can say, hey, the park's closed. And like I said, we can set it for summertime hours, but to me, 10 o'clock is 10 o'clock. Go home. Go play in your front yard at 10 o'clock.
I had another question of clarification on the permit application for this, for the pavilion. Says resident rental, five hours at $200. For non-resident rental, it said, there's no hours limitation, it's $300. Do-
It's five hours, too.
Okay, so they're both five hours?
Yeah, they're both five hours. Residents pay $200, non-residents pay $300.
Okay, gotcha.
And for all day, our residents pay $350 and non-residents pay $400 for all day. And everybody pays a $250 deposit for the pavilion, and that's refunded back to them. You all probably seen that in my reports that I give you every month where it says pavilion deposit refer, or return. That's what that is. So, if there's, everything's okay, they get their $250 back.
I got a couple of questions here. On page two and three, where it talks about the definition of a special event. Page three, item C, installation of a stage, band shell, trailer, van, portable building, grandstand, inflatable play structure, tent larger than 10 by 10, bleachers, public property, or bleachers on public property or on private property, where otherwise prohibited by ordinance. Does that mean if I have a birthday party at my house and I want to rent a inflatable, I have to have a city permit?
At your house?
Because it is private property.
Well, this is, well, that shouldn't, it says public property or on private property. Yeah, that needs to come off.
So, and on that same line, you know-
Because all we're talking about is the park. That should come off.
Well, for the special permit, we were talking about the park, we were talking about parades which cover streets.
Yes.
And it, it gets a little bigger than that, so that's why I was just curious on that.
Well, this would be if somebody put bleachers in their front yard, I guess, for a parade or on the rideaway, not really in their front yard. Because it goes on through and it talks about placement of temporary no parking signs in the rideaway.
Well, right, but I just didn't, when I read this, my first read, the inflatables made me wonder if, you know, if somebody has a birthday party at their house, by this, the way I read this, we're requiring them to get a permit, and it just didn't sit with me.
That's this permit, the special permit.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Not for their, that shouldn't say private. It shouldn't have anything to do with their residence.
So, we're taking private property off that line?
Yes.
Okay. On page four, under application, right in the middle of paragraph A, for application for special event.
Tell me where you're at again?
Page four.
Okay.
The bottom paragraph, application for special event. Right in the middle of the paragraph, it says the fee shall be non-refundable regardless of whether the permit is granted or denied. So, if somebody applies to use the park for something in 45 days and we tell them no, they don't get their $300 back?
Well, we don't make them put up a deposit at all.
What would the permit fee be?
It's $350.
When do they pay it?
They pay it at that time.
Okay.
If they make the application.
But here says if we don't approve it, we're not giving them the money back.
Well, it would not be approved for major things, like if they didn't contact text dot or anything like that. We can change it and give it back to them.
If, my thought is-
But we, I'm sorry, but administration side of it, we're going to spend a lot of time checking on all that. So, we could give them a portion of it back, but we're going to spend a lot of time checking all their application.
And that, that was my, my thought line, is if we're not spending any money and it's just denied, if we're not paying inspectors or staff prior to, then I don't think it would be right that we would keep the fee or all the fee or whatever was not utilized.
Yeah, we can remove that and we could, we can give them back everything except for like 20 bucks for the time that it took for the clerk to go through and check everything. So, we do, yeah, like an admin fee.
Right below that where it has the, the chart for the-
Or whichever way you want us to do it. If you want us to totally refund it, we can do that.
If we're expending money, I think we should cover, but I don't think, I personally don't think that for whatever reason something's disapproved, it cost us no money, that we should just make a profit line.
Right. So, we can change that. And add refundable less, a $20 admin fee.
Or if there was any other, if it's something big that would have, I don't know if BV would get involved with any, if it was a carnival or something like that.
Yeah, because those, because they-
It should go with costs.
Because that's what, yeah, and they, and if they're going to have amusement rides and stuff like that, that inspection is over here, especially if they require any special electrical or any water or wastewater info that they're needing, then that would be $60, and that's just for inspection fees.
And item, right below that, item B, I think we just need to put, refer to master fee schedule, because once again, we don't want to have our fees listed in-
Yes.
-numerous ordinances.
Yeah. Yes, that'll be moved over to the master fee schedule.
Motion to approve item A.
Where it's a discussion item, sir.
Discussion action.
Oh, it's a discussion item?
Yes, sir. But thank you.
Oh.
Just direction, and I've got notes on all those changes.
I do have one question. On page five and D.
Page five?
Five, yes, D. Number five says details of the offer of merchandise or soothing of food or alcoholic beverages at the special event. Are we allowing alcoholic beverages at the park or pavilion?
I don't think we can.
B.
Seems to me, I was told before, there was a city ordinance that says you cannot have alcohol on city property.
Well, we probably ought to strike that, too. But at some point in time, we need to talk about whether or not you want the pavilion to be able to have alcohol, because we're losing a lot of people that want to have receptions from weddings at our pavilion. And we could make a change and add in here that they're required to have law enforcement security and, you know, and it's overseen by that way, but probably not in the park. That needs to come off. But for the pavilion, though, I think it's something that in the future, the council needs to consider.
You could require a TABC certified server, too.
Yes, yes. And there's some cities that do it that way, and they require that off-duty is there to oversee it. oversee it.
As well as a catch-all, we see if the council wants to proceed with that now. Lindsay, can we ask that now, since it's a dual, covers both this and a potential, potential other ordinance change, to consider allowing alcohol to-
Sure.
Yes.
What's your thoughts, council?
Oh, go maybe in the pavilion, but definitely not out in the park.
Yeah, that's what Angie had said.
Park would be an open container anyway, wouldn't it? So, yeah, we can't do that, but pavilion, yeah, especially for an event.
Especially with the requirements, the safe nets that Mayor Protem brought up and such, so.
What was that liability? Somebody have a good time in the pavilion and walk out and decide to go swing, and next thing you know, he's on his back, or she?
And they've been drinking?
Yep.
Well, that's why you usually pay an off-duty officer and you have a bartender, a T. A. B. C. approved bartender. We can put those in the requirements, and if they over-serve them, then it goes back to them.
Could be potentially, some people.
We don't, most cities I worked in, we just didn't allow them to bring their own alcohol. They had to have a bartender, so, and that was why, to keep it under control.
So I guess the guidance is to move forward with changing both, or keeping that and changing the ordinance to match it for future meetings?
Yeah, because it would only be allowed in the pavilion.
Anything else, council? Any questions on that, Angie?
I've got all the changes.
All right, moving on to items of community interest. On April twelfth, from nine A. M. to two P. M. is Spring Fest at the city park. Early voting is at the City of Godly Pavilion, Tuesday, April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, from eight A. M. to five P. M. Monday, April twenty-eighth, and Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, from seven A. M. to seven P. M.
I have a Godly candidate forum is going to take place at Porter Grill at one-twenty-five State Highway one-seventy-one on Sunday, April the thirteenth, at two o'clock in the afternoon till four o'clock in the afternoon.
Anything else? There is no executive session tonight. Is there any other business for tonight? This meeting is adjourned at seven nineteen P. M.